I just wanted to take a brief moment between two big presentations today to welcome third graders from Franklin Elementary in Council District Four who are here in the back of chambers. And I don't know, there they are waving. I wanted to thank, uh, thank all the parents who are here. Could you please sit down for a moment in the front?
(singing) Happy Day to you, happy day to you, happy nation around the world celebrating happy day. Happy day to you, happy day to you, happy nation around the world celebrating happy day. Yeah! Yes, yes, I saw Boobenfield jamming up there.
Yes.
Happy Day makes me happy.
Okay, we're awaiting the next presentation. Again, if we could ask folks who are leaving to leave quietly and quickly, we can get ready for our next presentation. All right, we are ready for our presentation. Welcome, Mr. Kokorya. Mr. Otani, welcome. Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members. What an honor this is to be able to be with you for this very special recognition. Since 1958, the Los Angeles Dodgers have been one of the things that has unified us as a city, even through some of our most difficult, challenging times. The Dodgers, our beloved Dodgers, have been a source of unity across generations, across neighborhoods, across demographics, across status. The Dodgers are what brings us together. And so it was an enormous moment for this city earlier this year when the Dodgers were successful in completing the most important free agent acquisition probably in baseball history. When they signed an athlete who has achieved things in professional baseball that no one has achieved since Babe Ruth played. Somebody who is internationally renowned, internationally respected and admired, not only for his incredible athletic prowess, but for his character as well. And so on behalf of all Angelinos, I want to thank the leadership of the Dodgers for making this happen. And we have the Dodgers' leadership here with us today. Stan Caston, the President and CEO, Andrew Friedman, the President of Baseball Operations, Front Office executives Bob Wolf, Lon Rosen, and Brandon Gomez, and of course Dodgers manager Dave Roberts. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being with us. And thank you, and thank you for delivering a team for this city that our kids will tell their kids they were privileged to be able to watch. Short time ago, Councilmember Park and Councilmember Yaroslavsky and I were in Japan, and every single meeting we had with Japanese officials, the very first topic of the conversation in every single meeting was the fact that Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Dodgers were the new home of Shohei Ohtani. And so his presence here is not only important for our team as a baseball player, but his presence here is also important for us in further linking and deepening the ties that Los Angeles has with Japan. And so before we introduce the man of the hour, I would like to introduce our colleague, Councilmember John Lee.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Council President. If you know me, you know, in here we've had famous actors, we have, we've had heads of state, and while it's always been a privilege to meet them, it's only when we have sports figures here is when I truly freak out. Seeing, seeing Otani in Dodger blue is so exciting for us as Dodger fans. As someone who's grown up in Los Angeles, growing up as a Dodger fan, someone who, who just loves the game of baseball, watching what this man is doing is truly remarkable. And on top of that, he's on my fantasy baseball team, which is so, the reason why I'm in first place this year, because he is not arguably the best player. Statistically, he is the best player in baseball right now. And Mr. Otani, thank you so much. It is May, it is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's where we celebrate the different contributions of Asians from across the city of Los Angeles. And while we hope you think of Los Angeles as your home away from your other home, we want to fill that role because as someone growing up in the city who loved sports, wanting to see Asian players, wanting to see someone who looked like me, and now to have the best player in baseball, not only, you know, look, look, look like someone like me, but playing for the Dodgers, it's such a privilege. And thank you for everything that you're doing because we have people in politics, we have people in entertainment, all these different things, and now we have someone in sports. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to be a part of this presentation because this is truly an honor for me as a Dodger fan.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So ladies and gentlemen of the Los Angeles City Council, ladies and gentlemen of Los Angeles, please welcome the greatest baseball player in America, Shohei Ohtani.
First of all, I want to thank, you know, thank you very much for having me today, especially to the L.A. City Council. I'm incredibly honored and humbled by the recognition that I am receiving today. And also, I want to really thank the Dodgers organizations for their continued support as well as to the entire people of the city of L.A.
Thank you. Well, Shohei, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like you to, I'd like to present you with this resolution, which we voted on today and which has been signed by every member of the council recognizing today as Shohei Ohtani Day in the city of Los Angeles.
I think this is the most excited I have ever been in city council, so welcome to L.A. And I want to echo what Councilwoman Rodriguez said and the Dodgers organization truly. From bringing us Jackie Robinson and Sandy Koufax and Fernando Valenzuela, we see now an entire new generation of talent. Mr. Otani, you are not just a global superstar and fierce competitor on the field, but a great humanitarian off the field. As the council member who represents Japan Town in Sotel and who recently got to travel to Japan, it just brings me incredible joy to see an entire generation of AAPI fans be represented on the screen and in the stands at Dodger Stadium. L.A. is a global stage, and Mr. Otani, you fit in perfectly. I can't wait to see how many more records you're gonna break, awards you're gonna win, and how many millions of people you're going to inspire as we watch you over the years to come. We are so thrilled to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Council President, for bringing in this legend into our chambers. Mr. Otani, thank you for bestowing us with your presence.
Coach Roberts, today's Happy Day as well, Coach Roberts. I want to recognize your Japanese-American roots as well. And Mr. President Kokoryan, thank you very much for doing the unthinkable. Whoever thought that Shohei Ohtani would actually come and grace us with his presence here? We have to pay to go see him or watch him on ESPN or watch him on television, but to be this close to an incredible baseball player, and more than that, just a human being, I just want to say thank you very much.
But to have an Asian man be the face of the L.A. Dodgers, to have your name be on every Angelino's lips, it is really incredible to live in this city. It is incredible to have you play for it. Thank you so much.
I was there last night and got your bobblehead, and I did not know that you were going to come today, so I'm looking at him, I'm looking at you.
My name is Harriet Elliott.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
No, just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
I'm gonna continue with the people that died around me. All my friends are dead. Actually, someone wrote a book about something like this. I think it wasn't serious. Mine is actually very serious. My sister died because she would have said my son had no sign of pedophilia. That's what she said, she's an MFCC. So of course she had to die. The way I'm looking at it, the way I recognize how the death is related to me, most of them, half of them are through cancer. DEW's caused cancer. I don't know that this Renee has said that, but by the way, would anyone like this? She's my sole sister. She has the same problem as I do. Would anybody be interested? Anyway, um, all the things that Renee says in there are patents. She has, one quarter of her book is patent.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
All right, 14 is a reward, is a motion from the fake progressive, Yonese Hernandez, for, for reward money for stitches in CD-1. No on that. We shouldn't, and where's the motions for reward money? If we have any information on the cops, when they, when they shoot and kill someone, if we have any information on that, where's the information on that? Because I mean, you know, it's, where's the reward money for that? Because it seems like we should give some reward money if we have some information on when the cops shoot people. Get some reward, we get, some people could get rich because there's a lot of, the cops shoot people continuously. Let's see, we have, let's see. Eighteen, ooh, let's see, nineteen. Let's, let's just go to general comment.
Okay, so one minute.
All right, so Yonese, why, why were you posing with, for a picture with Kevin De Leon the other day? So on social media, I thought you wanted him out of office. Why are you campaigning for him? Why are you helping him with this reelection by posing for pictures with him, holding events with him? I mean, you know, fresh off your, you killing the ethics reform with Ugo, you know, you're taking pictures with Kevin De Leon. And I mean, you know, I noticed you're, you're doing a campaign event for his bill this weekend. I saw that, but I mean, why are you helping Kevin too? Like, because, because when you're giving him attention and working with him, you're, you're helping him. You know? And I don't know why Kevin did the, I mean, you know, Kevin has been gentrifying little Tokyo for years. And, you know, he's, he's not, his supporters frequently yell out anti-Asian slurs. So, I mean, yeah, Kevin needs to go.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Hi, my name is Melina Benjamins. I'm here doing general comment.
Okay, and can you, before you begin, can you please pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the eviction of my family's business at Placita Olvera. I'm a proud, proud granddaughter of Jesus and Francisco Hernandez and the niece of Richard Hernandez who operates La Carreta at Placita Olvera. My grandfather was invited by the original owner of Placita, Christine Sterling, where he began his legacy on the birthplace of Los Angeles. I'm here to represent my three sons, my nieces, and all the future grandchildren of la familia Hernandez. Placita, oh, oh, sorry, Placita Olvera was our childhood backyard and our playground. I grew up there, working there when I was a little girl, up to my teenage years. First with my grandparents by my side, then later my mother, along with my uncles, who have and continue to operate La Carreta and our other family business. I have expectations and would love to see future generations, not only of my family, but of all merchants, of Placita, to be able to experience and continue this tradition that brings our culture to a small part of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Brenda. I signed under general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
I'm speaking on behalf of the eviction of my familia Hernandez at Placita Olvera. I am third generation here and not only fighting my childhood growth, but my nephews and nieces. I worked at Placita most of my childhood, and because of my family's business, I was able to meet so many different people and have wild experiences one can only be, one can only get from being at Placita. To take this away from us is both removing not only just memories of our, of us, but people coming to visit L.A.'s history, but removing income of those who came to L.A., the United States, the land of the dreams, and I hope you are equally as passionate about the community at Placita, just like you were equally as passionate about the Dodgers. Thank you.
I was hoping De Leon would be here because this is under his district, but I will begin anyways. I'm a third generation merchant at Placita Olvera, and I am here to express my strong support for the city council's efforts to combat the unlawful eviction of La Carreta, located at the entrance of Olvera Street. It is a historical, family-owned business that celebrates and represents Mexican-American culture in Los Angeles and should be preserved as a landmark. As residents of L.A., we must uphold the values of our Mexican-American traditions, protect the merchant families at Olvera, and preserve our historical L.A. landmarks. For more than 50 years, our family business has been a treasure that links our city to traditions. It is a part of our identity as a city, and we must not displace or allow unlawful evictions from our historical street. Unlawful evictions not only destabilize individuals and families, but also disrupt the fabric of our community. Residents of L.A. face daily threats of displacement due to gentrification, not just in our homes, but in our businesses as well. We must preserve the historical businesses that make our city home and protect the merchants of Olvera Street.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Daniela Gallardo. I am the niece of Richard Hernandez, and I'm here today to talk about a famous donkey in hopes to warm your hearts and halt the eviction of not only my uncle's livelihood, but an unofficial official historical landmark of Los Angeles. The impact and the connection the donkey has had on the community is one like no other because everyone I know has at least one copy of them and their family at La Carreta. Evicting and leaving Olvera Street without its beloved donkey wouldn't hurt the city itself, but erase a longstanding memory of the Angelino culture and tradition. Would you evict the Dodgers from their stadium, Pacific Park, from Santa Monica Pier, both of which do not hold the same weight as the donkey and Carreta at Olvera Street? To you, this may be insignificant as the council members, but to my people like myself and my community, the erasure of this beloved stuffed landmark will be a huge loss. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 14 is about a reward, the apprehension and conviction. I think that families should be able to add to those rewards. Just as an example, don't get upset with me, but I have a $250,000 reward that'll be added to mine. So any individuals who think they can touch me are gonna be touched from the minute they go into Mint Central. Okay, now that sounds threatening, but you know what? We've gotta stop the killing in the city. If I can arrest my own son, I can arrest anybody else. And we have to live by law and order. And when I have people coming in here insulting, and I don't agree with everything you guys say, but I don't like seeing individuals insulted because of who they are, their families, et cetera. So again, the reward system, I'm a snitch. If you, if I know you've killed somebody, believe me, I'm gonna make sure you're arrested. And don't forget my additional reward of 250. Item 15, Holy Cross. You know how many times I've been to Holy Cross with my heart, my, all the different things I have? I hope that you folks pass this and that the equipment is brought to Holy Cross. It's an absolutely excellent hospital, and again, they need that. They, they need that equipment. May I move on to public comments, sir?
Yes, you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Uh, you know, today was a great day. I love the fact that Mr. Otani was here and, you know, he's honored because he throws a baseball. But the greatest, greatest presentation was with Father Boyle. He plays with hearts, he handles hearts and souls. Do you know how many of these kids just have changed the lives? I'll be going to the Norco, Norco California Rehabilitation Center at 1:30 and to watch all those young men there who are changing their lives. And because of people like Miss Hernandez, as I call her, Miss, the Lady of Rehabilitation, that's what you folks should be known for, for changing the lives of those who are given second chance. Don't let these critics who call and want to attack you and your family, don't pay attention to them. They have something wrong with them. Focus on making this city the best city, which it is, and many of you have short time here. Please, do your best job, and don't we all want to be loved like Father Gregory? I mean, that's an amazing story, amazing story. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thanks to the pumpkin head. So we got number 14. Look at this. Yonese Hernandez doing a good job trying to find snitches. Let's give her a hand. See, see, this is what she's trying to do. Now, she doesn't put down what the fuck happened to Mr. Andino Hernandez. She doesn't put down what the description of the perpetrator looks like. She didn't put down any information. So like, how the fuck are you supposed to go down to the community down on Seventh and Alvarado, Sixth and Alvarado, where I can go down there and find a snatch? I gotta have some more details of this shit. Otherwise, I can't go down there and find these motherfucking people if I don't know what, who the fuck's doing this stuff, right? So if you do these rewards, put some more documentation in the motherfucking agenda in English and Spanish, right? So you don't think about that shit. And then number 15, what the fuck? John Lee doing a good job? That can't be possible. Yeah, look at that. Yes, it is. Look at that. He says, yes, I did this. Providence Holy Cross Foundation took $250,000. Look at that shit. Wow. How about that? So if you're old and Jewish and live in CD-12, eventually you're gonna go to the trauma center over there at Providence Holy Cross, especially when you get your property tax bill. I mean, that thing causes a lot of fucking strokes, and they're right over there to help you. Very good job. Then we get this bullshit here, the Legacy Business Program. Every business is a legacy. Look at this. We got these people today from the El Pueblo, been here 100 fucking years in business. Where's their Legacy Business Program grant? Where's Kevin De Leon? In his district? They're fucking taking and evicting people for having a stuffed donkey in front of their fucking store, right? You know, there used to be a regular Budo, then the Budo died, and then they got the stuffed animal Budo. Everybody knows about the Budo. Now, the city attorney and the legacy business is evicting him. What the fuck is Bob doing about it in the budget committee? He doing shit. He's looking at me going, oh, I feel sorry for him, then fucking do something to save their goddamn fucking business. Now you got billions of dollars, why don't you save their business? Pay their back rent. How many times have I come down here in the last three years and told you about the El Pueblo Monument and your attempts to shut down all the businesses and sell it to redevelopment?
If you have one minute on this item, please move on to another item.
Fuck it is. Then we get the Grant Dispute Resolution Program for victims. Everybody's a fucking victim. Then we get to the general, and again, Moni Cal Rodriguez, stop wearing that goddamn ugly white flower. Let's give her a hand. Then we got Ramen Noodle back with that mommy hair again. What happened to pretty hair?
This is completely outside of the jurisdiction of the council, so speak to items that relate to our work, not the appearance of council members.
Under the Ninth Circuit law that I've read...
Happy to test that with you, Mr. Spindler.
Would you, would you like to test that?
Follow my instructions.
Because criticism of elected officials is protected speech under every case.
Yes, but you need to connect it to something within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council.
That is. It's about presentation and presenting yourself at a business meeting. It is clearly on fucking topic, right? Padella, right? I'm just here to help. Now, of course, you got Tracy Park trying to dress like a teenager. You're too old, Tracy. Don't try to wear that shit. Dress your fucking age, right?
All right, I've already instructed you, and your time has expired anyway. Have a seat. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mr. City Attorney. Can I have all items, please?
Yes, so you have, you have three minutes for the items.
Yes, Miss Hernandez. Start with number 14. Miss Hernandez, I couldn't remember how many times I spoke on similar agenda. I couldn't remember how many times I have seen similar award, similar reward to lead, to, to catch, to find someone responsible for certain violent crime. But day after day, week after week, and I still seeing this. But Miss Hernandez, can I ask you an elementary problem? Well, when we invite whatever baseball star right here, does that help to catch those criminals? When we were, you know, doing all those, giving back rent, do we, does that help catch those criminals who's responsible for those assault or responsible for the rape, for the killing, murder, or whatever? I really don't understand that why it is a rocket science for you to understand the person who can solve the crime is LAPD officer and detective. Now, move on to the number 18. And then, Mr. Attorney, and then for number 18 and the 19, I will speak together because both agenda is related to the crime, victims, so I will continue together. So number 18, which is the California Victim Grant. I, first of all, I support this motion because I, I believe crime victims' lives matter. But again, I want to inform, ask all the council members, specifically for Miss Hernandez, we actually have a way to prevent those victims to became the victim in the first place. Now, thinking about that, if we have more often LAPD patrol in all area of the city, if we have many LAPD detectives that can solve the case, they don't have to have like a five-month caseload, that they can solve every single criminal case in a timely manner. If we have enough law enforcement appearance on, on the metro public area, on the metro system, on every city, now those violent attackers, those violent criminals will not even attack in the first place if they, if they see a fully armed law enforcement officer. I do not believe this is something you need a PhD degree to understand. I don't believe this is something you need a master degree to understand. I don't believe this is something you need a master degree to understand. When the criminal sees a law enforcement LAPD, they are not going to do bad things. When those criminals enter your neighborhood, they know it will take 20 minutes for LAPD to get there. So they continue to go to your neighborhood, they continue to commit a crime in your neighborhood, they continue to do whatever, looting, rioting, raping, killing, attacking, or whatever. That's easy common sense. I would assume a three-years-old can understand that. But Miss Hernandez, you do not. And then continue to public comment. Talking about the great presentation we have there, sometimes we acknowledge those kind of special holiday, sometimes we acknowledge a baseball star, sometimes we acknowledge all those, the singer, the celebrities, all those fancy stuff. Does any of those do anything for the victim in city of L.A.? Does any of those do anything to lower the crime rates in city of L.A.? Does any of those do anything for the victim of a crime? So what I know, when Miss Hernandez, you always advocate for criminal justice reform and then you always advocate for second chance for criminals. Now, what I know is when someone is dead, when the victim is dead, they will never had their second chance. But you are saying someone who did something to them, they are entitled to their second chance. Miss Hernandez, how is that fair for the victim, for the victim's family? How is that equal, like everybody for the equal protection?
Speaker, your time has expired. So whoever's booing, again, please do not disrupt this meeting and please do not interrupt other public speakers.
I'm the owner and operator of the little business that's at Olvera Street. As you know, my family's been there 57 years. Yesterday, we had a rally of support from the city and from some of the members of council. And I wanted to thank Mr. León for coming down and supporting me and Miss Hernandez for also looking into this matter. I believe he's going to present a motion before this council to try to come to a resolution and somehow fix this. I appreciate all of your attention and perhaps we can keep this legacy alive. Thank you.
All right, eighteen, the Victim Assistance Fund. I hope that they, the funds include money for victims of domestic violence. I think there's far too much domestic violence in L.A. and not just necessarily the physical assault violence, but a lot of passive aggressive assaults with words. I spoke to some colleagues and experts about the way Paul talks down and treats Stacy. More than one suggested that I should ask you if you're still beating your wife. A thumbs up or thumbs down is fine. General public comment.
You have one minute.
KDL, I need a thumbs up or thumbs down from you as well on your Maury's wig. I keep fighting the good fight, but we're down to a 30/70 split on Smoke and Scan, saying it's a wig. I'm saying no way a vato with a we was that big is wearing a wig. I didn't know today was Hoppa Day. Thank you for that. To all the Hoppa ladies, be sure to thank KDL for spreading the word. Now you get the opportunity to spread for me this weekend. Keep the donkey on Olvera Street. I remember going down there as a kid, great time. I'm sure I'm not the only one that's a fan of the show there. And let's keep fathers in the home over jails. You know, let's stop the, what LBJ started when encouraging and awarding single motherhood in the black community. Seventy-two percent of black babies are born to unmarried mothers. Stop the domestic, the Democrat policies that saw black children living in two-parent households drop from 75% to 41%. Shout out to Smoke and Scan and to Stacy.
Starting with fourteen. Miss Hernandez, a great situation there to help people find those victims, the people that hurt those victims. Not sure if there's flyers or money's put aside for social media to get like, you know, Go Puppet Set, the, you know, some information on that. Get people out there to know what they're looking for, who they're looking for. Not sure that there's, not just a reward, but some money allocated to get that information out and about. That would probably help a little bit, too. Number fifteen, Monica Rodriguez, indeed. That trauma center is overworked and very declined. It is great that you guys are putting that money forth with and getting that place because they are really overwhelmed and honest truth, it keeps a lot of people alive, especially on the weekends. And that is a major trauma center in the valley. Number sixteen, Richard Hernandez. My family goes back to Cilito Lindo, the Guacamole Taco's at the corner. So again, I understand the ties to the City of Angels and I hope it passes with flying colors for you. Number sixteen, same way that that's historical, Monica Rodriguez, you are taking 1326-9 Van Nuys Boulevard out of Pacoima and you're starting genderfication to put that soft rail, taking historical areas out. You just spoke on this. I mean, Snake has a split tongue about the hillside village. Yeah, so what is it, you're going to either preserve historical areas or you're going to do as you will for the people and let them eat cake, right? As long as you're eating well, once you close the business district down there, it's going to be no different than that, the burritos, letting that donkey get out of there. Once you get that, you're going to get what? A Starbucks cafe? Come on, anyone there, Bloomingfield, Paul Corian, that gondola for Dodger Stadium? The Dodgers were in there right now. They didn't ask for you to put the gondola up, right? The McCourt did, to money grab. And we, the city of Los Angeles is paying attention.
Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to.
City Attorney, how come you always do this to me when I speak? But when people talk about sexual acts on Figueroa, you have no questioning of asking them why they're talking about getting head on McCourt.
I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Or general public comment, then. But you always do it to the people that attack the people in the city council. I'm just telling you, the city of Los Angeles, pay attention to what's happening. The Dodgers were in-house, they were not once asking for that gondola that's going to affect Chinatown. Not once did they say, we want that gondola. That's McCourt. He owns half of the parking lot at Dodger Stadium. So if he goes a multi-story parking lot, he could build houses on the other quarter of that property and sell them at Mansions, right? Gondola straight to your doorstep. He doesn't, he's never done anything to give to L.A. Is it free parking? He don't need the parking lot. If he really cares about L.A., give us free parking, McCourt. But you won't. It's a money grab. All the old geezers that walked in there to support him, same thing. You think any of those are going to get on that gondola? No, they're not. Follow the money.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Good afternoon, city council members. This is for Karen Price. Hey, Councilwoman Karen Price, you're an indictee. You're corrupt and you're a dirty sinner. Why don't you tell that to Pastor Boils, who was in the city council chambers today? You need to resign. You're an indictee. The same, when Mark Ridley Thomas was indicted, he was suspended from the city council. What makes you special, Councilwoman Karen Price? You're an indictee. You shouldn't even be serving in the city council chambers. You should have someone else become a substitute of your position. You are the reason why there's corruption. You're the, you're the fourth person in the city council chambers in the city of Los Angeles to be an indicted criminal. Fourth person in Los Angeles city council history.
Caller, your time has expired.
And all of them.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and, you have three minutes for the items.
My name is Susan Rocha. I live in CD1, who refuses to answer my phone calls and just hangs up on me. That's very rude of your office to do that. Won't see me or meet with me. And it's really, you don't give a damn about other people.
Speaker, you need to speak to the agenda items, the open items or items fourteen through nineteen. If you'd like, you can speak for one minute on general public comment.
Okay, I'll take general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, you're really racist. I mean, progressives, Democrats need to learn that a progressive Democrat is not the same as a regular Democrat. They're really, progressives are the extremists. They're really off-the-wall charts. People really need to be aware of that. And there's too much racism. You think Kevin's racism? He ain't nothing. Kevin ain't no racist. Ulysses sure is, though, because I've had several hate crimes against me, but in your eyes, white people don't count. You won't hear my stories. You don't give a damn what happens. And no, there's no riots, there's no community meetings on all the hate crimes that happened to me, including my four tires just got slashed. My dog was kidnapped by my neighbor. I've been told not to walk on their sidewalk. And I could just go on and on and on. But no, when you're white, it's okay, right? It's okay because you don't care and you don't want to hear it. And your staff turns the other way.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you very much for bringing Shohei Otani. It was unexpected, but historical and jaw-opening and inspiring. So I thank you very much for that.
Thank you.